Carol is easily abused.
Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council and San Bruno Redevelopment Agency Meeting of January 25, 2011. I'd like to thank San Bruno Garden Club for the floral arrangement they supply for all of our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell. Here. Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
And I see our treasurer, John Marty. Would you lead us in the pledge, please?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, you did not put. I was just looking.
Announcements? I do have one announcement. Our interim city attorney, Mr. Greg Rubens, this is his last meeting tonight. He's with the firm of Aaronson, Dickerson, Conan, and Lanzon, and they've served us well for the last number of months, so I just wanted to wish you well and thank you for the good job.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure serving San Bruno.
Thank you.
Community.
During an extraordinary time.
Extraordinary time.
Yeah, that's right.
Item number four, presentations. We don't have any presentations this evening. Item number five, review of the agenda. I would like to move up number 11, which is the, receive the annual report from the Personnel Board to write after public hearings, number eight. That's all right. Any other changes on the agenda? All right. The approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of January 11, 2011. Any changes in missions, corrections? Seeing Nandell's stand approved as submitted. Consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action on the consent calendar?
Moved approved.
Second.
Motion second, and the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number eight, public hearings. We don't have any public hearings this evening. Would like to move right to item number 11, which is the annual report from the Personnel Board, and Chairperson Ed Fuentes is with us tonight, and I see Joe Roberts is also in attendance. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, council. My name is Ed Fuentes. I'm the chair of the Personnel Board, and with me here is fellow member Joe Roberts. First thing I would like to do is to acknowledge our other members. Anne Marie Jones, Vice Chair, who could not be here tonight, Ed Commerford, and also I'd like to also thank Dave Thomas, who spent quite a few years on the board and recently resigned just this year. Our charter for the Personnel Board, as stipulated in the city code 2.36140, is our charter that binds us to our rules and regulations. Some of the accomplishments that we achieved last year is that we reviewed just over 38 job descriptions across various cities departments, including community development, finance, public services. We tackle about four or five each session, so it takes quite a while to go through each and every one to ensure consistency and maintain our standards and flexibility to allow the best people to be hired at the city. We reviewed and recommended one new job description, which was critical to the reorganization of the Public Services Department to make them more efficient and effective. That I believe was the water conversation, conservation manager position.
In the future, we would continue to review the status of all recruitments, new appointments,
review the eligibility list, compliance reports as needed. We also participate in the proctoring of written exams and evaluation tests for the city. And of course, we will continue to review any job descriptions as deemed needed. We look forward, and we're very proud to serve the city in this manner. And this concludes Anna's report.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for our Personnel Board?
Through the chair.
Irene?
I just, I know the whole council is appreciative of what you do. It's a very tedious, or can be a very tedious job, but you do it very well, and we really appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Through the chair. I'd also like to commend you on your service, too. And also Anna Marie Jones, who has been on it for a hundred years.
Many years.
And I wish her well, and, yes, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Also, for me also, it's very, very time-consuming, laborious work, and we really appreciate it because it's very, very necessary. And also, thank you to Tammy and her staff for helping. You put in time, too. So, thank you very, very much, and please thank the rest of the board for us.
Very welcome.
Thank you.
Item number nine is public comment on items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to speak to the council on public comment? Please give us your name and your street.
Hi, my name is Allison Iglio. I live on the Peninsula Place on Cherry Avenue in San Bruno. I have since 1982, and I just wanted to say that back east, they have a procedure that's been working out quite well for people that are annoyed by any particular pothole or crevice in the streets or whatever. They adopt it, inform the city, make a donation, and that is the next one that is taken care of. I'm sure that might interfere with the process that's going on now, where a lot of the roads are being repaved, but I think it's something that people could get involved in, and it would be very productive, both for the city and for the people have to drive on our streets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes, Irene.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry?
Thank you. Do you know some of the cities that are doing that?
New York City.
And any smaller ones? No, just New York?
The only other one I have ever lived in.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I am Alan Lubke of Fleetwood Drive. Honorable Mayor Ruane, members of the San Bruno City Council. For the last several months, I have asked at this meeting for your honorable council to place an item on the agenda to have San Bruno city staff report on the details of the cutting of the tree in the Rolling Wood neighborhood, specifically the tree which once rested in front of the former Rolling Wood Community Center building at 2570 Catalpa Way. This week, I received an email from city manager Connie Jackson explaining some of the details surrounding the cutting of the tree. However, it is my opinion that an email response to me is not sufficient, since this is a neighborhood issue, and the questions and the request has been proffered at this city council meeting. Again, I repeat my request for an agenda item or some other public forum for the Rolling Wood neighborhood to learn about why the tree was cut down and to assure the neighbors that any necessary policy or procedural changes are in place before any other such event occurs. My second comment regards the Glenview Fire. I am disappointed in the city's website and strongly suggest that the format be tuned up to highlight the latest information. Much more importantly, it is my opinion that at this meeting, the San Bruno City Council meeting, that there be at each and every meeting an agenda item for staff to report on the Glenview Fire developments to include the following. One, notification of the latest published report from the NTSB and other agencies with a copy made available to citizens. Number two, announcement of any pending public meetings or forums. Number three, status of any proposed legislation such as income tax and home evaluation policy and disaster status and appeals thereto. Number four, progress in reconstruction, to include such things as progress on the canyon repair, production of plot map surveys, building permits issued. Number five, ongoing as well as completed investigations. Not necessarily the status of the ongoing investigations, but what they are. Identify them by giving them a name and a point of contact on each. Maybe citizens have information that they would like to report but don't know who to report to. Certainly, any criminal filings should be noted by staff. It is my opinion that this will enhance the keeping of the citizens of San Bruno informed. As a third item regarding investigations, I have some fundamental questions regarding the ongoing investigation by the San Bruno Police Department. My question is this: Is Ground Zero of the Glenview Pipeline explosion still a crime scene? Was it ever a crime scene? If it was a crime scene and is no longer a crime scene, when did it not become a crime scene? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item 10, conduct of business. First item is receive city council donation subcommittee report and adopt the resolution approving donation distribution and authorizing the city manager to distribute funds to residents in the Glenview Fire area.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, first I'd like to, if I might, give you an update on the action that the city council took last meeting, and which is a part of your action tonight that's being requested, and that is to confirm by the adoption of a resolution the policy that the city council authorized at the recommendation of the donation subcommittee at your previous city council meeting. Specifically, that policy calls for the distribution of a large portion, roughly $330,000, of the amount that has been collected, received by the city over the course of the last several months since the tragic explosion and resulting fire in the Glenview neighborhood. The, more specifically, the policy calls for that amount to be distributed to residents whose properties were either completely destroyed or experienced damage of the significance that it requires at the minimum a building permit to be obtained in order for the work to be completed, to repair the damage. In total, there are 99 properties that are eligible under the city council's policy for receipt of some distribution of the funds that have been received by the city. And at the request of the Rotary Club of San Bruno and the Associated District 5150, I believe it is, of Rotary International, we are taking the necessary actions to distribute the funds, both that have been allocated by the city council, and again, at the request of Rotary, the amounts that they have collected, so that actually our residents will receive just slightly more than the amounts that were authorized by the city council, because we will distribute Rotary funds in conjunction with the city funds. Distribution of checks will begin tomorrow. All of the residents who are affected have been notified by mailed letter that outlines, that attaches a map and outlines the policy in more detail, so that residents have the ability to understand what amount that they would specifically individually be entitled to. And as I said, we will begin the distributions tomorrow. For the purpose of public information, we would like to note that it is not necessary for all 99 individuals to show up tomorrow at City Hall. We will be, the checks are available. They are not going anywhere except into the residents' hands, and we will be prepared to make those checks available at any time over at least the next 30 days. So, it is not necessary, again, to show up first thing tomorrow morning in order to receive the check, although we will be ready to begin distribution at that time. Moving forward to the remaining items of the subcommittee's work, the subcommittee has met two additional times since the last city council meeting and has carefully considered the procedure and issues related to distribution of the remaining approximately $58,000 that was discussed as part of the council's policy last time. Specifically, that policy includes the desire that those funds be distributed to residents who were impacted by the tragic circumstances in the Glenview neighborhood, and that that distribution occur not later than six months hence, or July 12 of 2011. You have in front of you a short memo that outlines two significant activities that the committee is recommending that be undertaken. First, that small number, three individuals from the neighborhood, be asked to be included in the committee's deliberations, and specifically to assist in evaluating the application procedure and the review of applications for distribution of those remainder funds. And secondly, the committee is further recommending that early special circumstances be considered for one and possibly two families who do not specifically meet the criteria that was previously outlined in the city council's policy, but whose families were tragically impacted by the loss of family members. In one case, the family does not own property in the Glenview neighborhood, and in another situation, there are extenuating circumstances regarding the property ownership. So, with those two additional considerations, I believe the committee may have some additional comments, and no action is required tonight by the city council, other than your expressed intent to adopt a resolution confirming your actions of the prior city council meeting.
Subcommittee?
Thank you. As the city manager explained, Councilmember O'Connell and I have met a couple more times, and we are bringing the further recommendations for the second phase of the distribution for your comments and hopefully your approval to proceed. We have identified three residents that we would like to serve with us on the subcommittee. We had a number of people that expressed an interest, but we felt that the smaller number would help us arrive at a decision quickly and fairly, and so we kept the number at three. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank everyone who expressed an interest in helping. We certainly wish we could have included everyone. I know we got a lot of great ideas from the public, and certainly would have been nice to have more people on there, but as I mentioned, the smaller group, we felt, would be able to come to a decision quickly and fairly. Anything you want to add to that, Irene?
No, we've already scheduled a meeting. We plan to move as soon as you approve of this, or give your nod of approval. We'll move forward next week.
Okay. I also wanted to mention that, or acknowledge that, we have received a lot of feedback regarding the first phase of the distribution, some of it positive, some of it not so positive. But again, part of why we recommended retaining some of the funds was because we knew that there would be circumstances that were not met in the initial distribution, and so we intend to hopefully address as many of those concerns as possible as we move forward in the second phase.
Questions or comments?
That was my, that was going to be my question or comment, is that we are privy to some comments that came right after the decision of the last meeting, and if, as long as they've been addressed, then that's being under consideration.
Through the chair. Echoing what Councilmember Ibera said, too, that you're, we're all aware, we received some emails of some folks that want to have a consideration, and I believe the committee and yourselves will sit and discuss that. I think it's important, and I'm glad to see that there's three individuals that will be serving on this. I think that's a positive thing. And I think it's also important that the community realizes, not only in Crestmore Two, but throughout the community, but by no means with these allocations of funds to the 99 that are currently going on and maybe a few additional, does it minimize anybody's impact? Does it make anything minor at all on what happened on September the 9th? And even though maybe you were evacuated for three nights, and maybe your home is in good condition and your family was safe, obviously, you had an impact. You were a victim as well as everybody else who had greater loss and tragedy that they experienced. So, I also want the community to understand that, that by no means is this minimizing what everyone in that area or this community faced and was affected on that night and subsequently. And I'm glad to see that this is moving forward, and hopefully, those that have some concerns or additional comments will come forward and it can be addressed.
If I could just say one, and I think I could speak for everyone on this council, that no means does this close the door on us addressing the victims in the Glenview area. I am, I believe we're all still committed to address any other concerns, financial or not, even if we don't have funds to redistribute or something. We are here to be able, you know, to help and understand the challenges and the sacrifices that these families have gone through, because we didn't experience it. They've experienced it, and now it's going on for over four months now. And so, this, it's still going to be a long time, and as long as the community knows that we stand behind the mayor and that we will help when needed.
Yes, and I've said since day one that this is all new to us. We're in uncharted territory, as are all of the residents. So, you know, the semantics, the language that we use, major versus minor, has nothing to do with, if you will, what you really experienced. Some people had major residential damage, and some people had major psychological damage, but this procedure that was developed by the subcommittee, I think is very, very good, is in some way to try to comply with the wishes of all the people, all the thousands of people that gave money for the Glenview residents and victims. So, I think they've done a great job. I like your idea about the subcommittee kind of increasing to an extra three residents. You're going to get the input directly from them for the remainder of the money, and it's a good way to move forward. So, we're here, as I said, since day one, to actually hold your hand and walk you through this any way, shape, or form that we can, and we will continue to do this until this is finished, although I don't know if we're ever going to be the same again. So, with that, I will entertain someone adopting the resolution.
Is there a resolution?
Do we introduce the resolution?
I'd like to introduce the resolution for adoption.
Councilmember O'Connell. Aye. Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item number B, adopt a resolution accepting the independent auditor reports, the city's comprehensive annual financial report, CAFR, single audit and Measure Eight funds audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2010.
Earlier this evening, the city council held a special study session to review the annual reports, the audit reports performed by our independent auditors, Mayor Hoffman, McCann. These reports include the city's comprehensive annual financial report, the Redevelopment Agency financial statements, the single audit report, and also the audit of the Measure Briefly, to summarize, the city's comprehensive annual financial report, the city's net assets, which is the difference between the assets and the liability on the entire, for the entire organization, increased by 1.28 million to 100.6 million dollars. In terms of the city's governmental activities, which consists of the general government, public safety, public works, streets, parks, recreation, library, and community developments, there was a slight decrease in the net assets of $93,000. For the business-type activities, which includes our water, wastewater, cable operations, there was an increase in net assets of $2.7 million. And lastly, for the city's chief operating fund, which is the general fund, there was a net increase in the unreserved fund balance of $790,000. That $790,000 is actually available for the city council to designate as additional reserves consistent with the city policy of setting aside such reserves. Now, mind you, during the course of the year, we were, we did use some reserves in order to balance the budget, so the fact that the ending results shows a positive increase in unreserved fund balance gives us the ability to basically restore some of those reserves that were drawn during the course of the year. As I mentioned, these results, the financial results, were audited by the independent auditors, and what that means is that this qualified opinion says that our financial statements fairly present the results of the city's operations free of material misstatements. At this point in time, staff is requesting the city council accept the independent audit reports, including the CAFR, and also a separate resolution to accept the Redevelopment Agency financial statements. I'm also ready to take any questions that the city council has on these financial reports.
All right. We just came from a study session regarding this. Do the council have any additional questions? Action?
I'm Alan Lubke of Fleetwood Drive. Would the speaker introduce himself, please?
Yes, I'm Ed Binsoon. I'm the Finance Director.
Say that again, please.
Ed Binsoon, Finance Director.
Thank you.
I'll introduce the resolution accepting the independent audit reports.
Councilmember O'Connell. Aye. Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10C, adopt a resolution accepting the city's comprehensive annual financial report, CAFR, and Redevelopment Agency report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2010.
This is a trailing resolution for the Redevelopment Agency.
I'll introduce the resolution for adoption.
Councilmember O'Connell. Aye. Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item D, receive quarterly financial report as of December 31, 2010, for the 2010-11 general fund, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and internal service funds budget.
general fund, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and internal service funds budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As we look at the result, financial results of the city for the six months just concluded, one of the things I wanted to point out specifically, on your staff report, the tables that are indicated on page 73 and 74 of your council packet, the budget information that's shown in those tables are the amended budgets. So, for fiscal year 2009-10, those are the final amended budget numbers for that year. And it's all, important to note that that budget included reductions of revenues during that course, during the course of that year, given the economic conditions that the city was facing with at that period of time. With that, that, I'll go into the financial results for the six-month period. This slide shows the five largest revenue categories for the city. I've added a sixth category, that being the hotel motel tax, only from the perspective that there's a significant difference in terms of this year's performance versus last year. So, I'll start with property tax. Property tax revenues for the six-month period were at 2.7 million dollars, around 48% of the full-year budget and slightly below the results of the prior year. Property tax revenues are generally received in two large installments, one being in the December month and the other in the April-May period. Another component of the property tax is the supplemental property tax that's basically received from the, by the, from this county, by the city, and that's based on the turnover of property and/or, in another way of saying it, any sales of property and a reassessment would be forthcoming in the form of a supplemental property tax. In the area of sales tax, again, mind you, last year's results were severely depressed given the economic conditions at that time. So, this year's results compare quite favorably with that of last year's, and we're at the 50% mark already in terms of this year's performance for, for that category. In terms of motor vehicle license fee, slightly below the 50% mark and somewhat comparable to the same results of the prior year. Charges for services were right at the 50% mark and, and just slightly below the comparable period of last year. Second to last category for the use of money and, and property, those are a combination of investment income that, from the city's portfolio. One, one thing of note in, in terms of this category is that while there has been an uptake of interest rates, short-term rates are still relatively low and therefore investment yields on our portfolio continue to be relatively depressed in terms of earnings that the city sees for, for its monies that's invested. And lastly, as I mentioned earlier, the, the category is the hotel motel tax. The better comparison, if I may, from this year to last year is really due to two factors. We now have the benefit of a full six months of an increase in the TOT rate that was approved by the voters back in November 2009, when the increase went up from 10 to 12%. Over and above that, if we peel off that piece, we're still seeing some, if I can call that, organic growth in that revenue category. Moving on to expenditures, we have the various departments indicated on the slide. And if we look at the overall expenditures, we're at the 40%, 47% mark for the first six month period. I fully expect that, you know, at the end of the year, as we continue to monitor the expense, the expenditures of the city, that we will be able to come out with a budget that is balanced. One thing of note that I, I do want to point out is that the balancing of the fiscal 2010-11 budget does include two limited-term revenues that were used for the fiscal year, that being the excess ERAF of $500,000 and also $400,000 in terms of repayment from the redevelopment agency. So, while there's some positive news, we're also mindful of the fact that there's still the use of reserves and it's, it's still an ongoing challenge for, for the organization. In the area of redevelopment, revenues and expenditures, similar to the property tax revenues, we receive about approximately half of that during the first half of the year and the other half, we don't receive until the, the April to May month. And likewise, for the low and moderate income housing fund, those revenues are also follow the same pattern and those are really the tax increments. In terms of expenditures, most of the expenditures occur in the redevelopment agency in the latter part of the fiscal year. A big part of the redevelopment operations is really the tax increment money that's shared with the taxing agencies, and that's done toward the end of the fiscal year after we've accumulated all, all the tax revenues and done the calculation in terms of the tax sharing with the other tax entities. In terms of the low and moderate income housing fund, those revenues, I'm sorry, those expenditures also include, the budget expenditures also include a subsidy that we provide to the crossing project, and that's also paid toward the end of the fiscal year. In terms of the, oh, this, this slide, it's, I'm going to go very briefly on this slide. Our internal revenue service funds really are charges against the various departments in terms of revenues and therefore it's exactly at this 50% level. These are internal charges that the, the city financed out, does on a routine basis. In terms of expenditures, obviously by looking at the slide, we're within the levels through the first six months. The enterprise funds, the, the four enterprise funds that we have, the cable operations and then the water and the wastewater and the stormwater operations, I'll start with expenditures, they're, they're all within the budgeted categories there. In terms of cable television, one of the initiatives for the cable television operations was really to roll out the commercial services product line and direct sales product line. Those initiatives have fallen a little below what we, our expectations are. Likewise, the expenditures, as you can tell, also are correspondently lower than what were our budget levels are. So, while there is a favorable comparison in terms of this year's revenues for cable TV versus last year, it's, there's still a bit of work to be done in terms of, you know, hitting those targets for those two areas that I indicated and namely the commercial services. Challenges for the upcoming year, as I've indicated, while we think that at the end of the fiscal year, we would be able to come, finalize the year with a balanced results, there are already challenges for the upcoming fiscal year. And some of those challenges include rate increases in our retirement plan with CalPERS. As indicated on the slide, there are significant increases in the employer contribution rate, rates for our plan. And in the miscellaneous plan, it's going up approximately 3% from 14.7 to almost 18%. And then for the safety plan, it's going up almost a full 5% from 30.1%, I mean 31% to almost 36%. The impact to the general fund is going to be approximately $650,000. So, you know, there's, there's already an issue that we need to deal with proactively as we start thinking and planning for the upcoming fiscal year's budget. The governor's has already made a proposal in terms of addressing the state's continued deficit, and one of the large impacts is going to be in the redevelopment agency and his proposal to eliminate redevelopment agencies that are here in, in the states. There is a subsequent staff report that's going to talk further about it. Initial estimates in terms of impacts to the general fund, just in terms of support of the services that the general fund provides and through a share, a charge that the general fund assesses the redevelopment agency funds is somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars. So, just off the bat, that is potentially another area that we need to address as we think about the 2011-2012 budget. Other uncertainties include litigation that may be impacting the wastewater enterprise. Once that settlement is finalized, we will see some, some financial impacts on there. With these issues, you know, looming about, on the city, staff recommends that the city council give authorization for the city, for the city staff to schedule a study session within the next 30 days to start, start exploring strategies for development of the 2011-2012 budget. So, with that, I'll, I'll take any questions regarding this update for the first six months.
Any questions of Mr. Soon?
Through the Chair.
Ken.
Ed, thanks for all the good news. And this is what I, I always ask your predecessors, so, setting aside all these percentages and numbers.
Yes.
What is your opinion on how, on the trend now that we're undertaking after this first six months?
There, there is some positive trends, namely what I've indicated earlier in terms of sales tax, but at the same time, it's an easy comparison in terms of sales tax because things got really, really bad during last year in terms of sales tax revenues. So, when you look at it this year versus last year for the first six months, you see a positive trend there. Is consumer spending back full force? You know, arguably, you know, it's still debatable. We still see some macro data in terms of unemployment, state's unemployment is still in excess of 12%. I, I mentioned earlier in terms of TOT, yes, there's some positive signs in there, albeit helped by the fact that we increased our rate from, you know, 10 to 12%. You know, there's lots of challenges ahead. As I mentioned earlier, how we were able to provide a balanced budget for this current fiscal year is with the use of limited, you know, limited resources, limited revenues, limited-term revenues that is. And so, we're definitely not out of the woods. There's the, you know, existing challenges over and above the fact that, you know, there's the increased PERS rates, what the state takeaway is going to be, you know, and that's very fluid, you know, with the governor's proposal. A part of that proposal also requires the voters to extend the, the temporary tax measures that are currently in place, which includes the extension of sales tax, extension of the vehicle license fee, extension of the temporary increase in personal income tax. So, there's still quite a number of variables that we still need to deal with and we don't have answers for. So, you know, my, my overall summary, if I may, is that there are still lots of issues that we still have to deal with and therefore, you know, a certain amount of urgency in terms of wanting to explore those with the city council in, in the form of a study session so that we can plan sooner than later for the next, next budget.
Thank you. Any other questions?
To the Chair, the only thing quickly I will say is that I think it is a proactive approach to do it within the next 30 days. I believe that, as you already indicated, with the $650,000 with PERS, in addition to the redevelopment, which could be a million, and other things that may occur, we could be looking at a $2 million concern upcoming for general fund, which we all know what that affects, police, fire, library, parks, rec, et cetera. So, very challenging, I think back to when, and who would have known a couple of years ago when I said, you know, that I believe that the next couple of years would be, we would be facing a lot of issues and challenges, both for the community and for ourselves. And I think we're going to see this next budget cycle. So, I, I think the idea of meeting in 30 days to tackle this early is, is, is good.
Any comments or questions? Thank you for your report. No action. Next item is E, adopt a resolution approving second quarter budget amendments for the 2010-11 operating and capital improvement program budgets.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These budget amendments predominantly are summarizing actions that the city council took during the course of the just concluded three months from October through December. So, I'll just briefly go over some of those actions there. In the area of grants, we had, the city council took actions for, to appropriate monies, grant funds for a couple of capital projects. First one is the transit corridors pedestrian connection improvement project, which is being funded by a livable community's grant. So, we have revenues and an appropriation for the $262,000. The second item there is a FEMA grant that we received for the mobile and portable radios for the fire department and also a second grant for rescue equipment. Those amounts will be expended for the purchase of those assets there. And then the last item on this particular slide is an appropriation of $50,000 from the public arts fund for the memorial sculpture. Moving on, the emergency disaster fund, the first section with the aggregate total of 1.387 million dollars were items that have been discussed with the city council during the course of three months. And, you know, I'm not going to go over each one of those items individually, but the, one of the more significant items obviously is the item on the erosion control and the, and the work on the retaining wall and at the, at the canyon. The second portion of that is our costs that the city has incurred since the disaster in terms of response. When I say response, these are predominantly overtime that staff has incurred in relationship to work for the Glenview disaster and then the various categories of supplies. We also had professional services from our interim city attorneys. We had separate bills for work devoted to the Glenview fire, and that's identified there. And then some items in terms of tools and equipment, and that actually includes, even though classified as tools and equipment, includes the extra cost that we incur for debris removal related to the incident. So, in aggregate, that sums up to be about $680,000. Moving on, other adjustments, amendments to the budget, specifically capital improvement items, we have the great separation of $277,000 that's being funded by the redevelopment agency and also the transit quarters pedestrian improvement plan, as indicated earlier. Part of that is a grant and the other portion is actually coming from the RDA. So, the aggregate of that is $350,000 for that particular project appropriations for that. In terms of parks and facilities, capital improvement projects, the, the project on hand is the installation and the purchase of the wheelchair lift for the library, and that actually was funded by the state library fund. And lastly, on this slide is an appropriation in the wastewater fund for the development of the sewer master plan. And in terms of the redevelopment agency, we have the two transfers out for And in terms of the redevelopment agency, we have the two transfers out for projects, namely the great separation and again, the transit corridor pedestrian connection improvement projects. So that summarizes the appropriation and the revenue adjustment requests for the just concluded quarter. I'll take any questions from the city council at this point in time.
Any questions?
Through the chair.
There you go.
Just on the appropriations, the $679,442, which are costs directly attributed to the disaster on September the ninth, it's my understanding that these are costs that are being issued down or claims being given to PG&E for reimbursement?
Absolutely. Our goal is to make the city whole in terms of, you know, financial expenditures, costs that we've incurred. So we are continuing to work with the recovery process and working directly with PG&E on the reimbursement of these costs.
And you indicated a little bit under tools and equipment, you gave some examples. I also believe the fire truck windshield was cracked on that night due to the heat, had to be replaced, and I believe just, just for, you know, supplies could be meals that were provided.
That's correct.
During that, and you already alluded to salary and benefits, or of course overtime that the city incurred in addition to the Medicare that's required to be paid. We don't have to pay additional PERS on overtime, but those are some costs that have well gone into this, even though I know it seems rather high, correct?
That's correct. Those are really the predominant costs. The other element, which may not be overtime, is that if we had part-time staff, we held over to work more hours. In that case, then those would be just regular, classified as regular hours.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Action.
I'll introduce the resolution for adoption.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item F, provide an update on the impact of the governor's proposed state budget and approve a letter to governor and legislature opposing, eliminating redevelopment agencies. City manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as the finance director has indicated, the primary threat to local agency funding resulting, or anticipated in the near term, next year from the governor's budget, is the potential loss of redevelopment, not just a loss of redevelopment resources that would become payable to the state as has occurred over the last two years, but the entire elimination of redevelopment from the work program of redevelopment agencies up and down the state. This is not the only potential impact of the governor's proposed budget, but it is by far the most significant, and I'll spend most of my comments on that particular threat, but would highlight for you a couple of other features of the governor's budget, or the governor's proposed budget, that have a potential of impact to the city of San Bruno and its next year and potential future year budgets. The first is the governor's proposal to, let me, let me back off and describe the governor's proposed budget as one that redefines the way that many services are delivered, and particularly services that are either funded or directly provided by the state of California. In an effort to resolve continuing and increasing deficit issues at the state, this is a more massive reconstruction of service delivery than has been implemented in prior year state budgets, but, and has the potential to affect the city on, on many different levels. Some of them at this point are not yet able to be predicted. A couple that are is the governor's proposal to shift down to local governments, the incarceration of offenders with a commensurate or a corresponding shift in revenues for, for the services provided primarily by county jails. The big problem is, in that proposal, is that county jails in many areas of our state are already operating at capacity, and the funding that's proposed to be shifted by the state to the local government, to the county in this case, is not sufficient to cover the costs associated with those services. So the counties are predicting a difficulty in being able to house offenders and the potential for release of low-risk offenders and juveniles back onto the streets with a uncalculatable, at least at this point, potential effect to local law enforcement agencies who are dealing with offenders who might otherwise be incarcerated but are back out on the streets because they can't be housed. In addition to that, there is the unanswered question remaining in the governor's budget about the continuation of the vehicle license fee structure that is currently in place and which is subject to consideration by the legislature and potentially by voters. Vehicle license fees are currently being used by counties, in particular by San Mateo County, to offset the cost of booking fees that would otherwise be charged and were previously charged to local cities. In the case of San Bruno, there's approximately $100,000 in booking fees that are currently being covered by vehicle license fees that are going to the county. Should that be discontinued, then it is likely that the city would be saddled with that cost, and I'll say new cost, that is not currently being calculated into our budget. So there are two potential effects in the law enforcement or the criminal justice area. A second and more minor impact is, and I would say highly likely to be impacting local library services up and down the state. Currently, the state funds a couple of programs, including the library facilities program and the interlibrary loan program, which, through which the city receives approximately $25,000 a year. In prior years, those funds were deposited to the city's own internal fund that was building up a balance with the hopeful anticipation of being able to deploy those funds, seed money, to the construction of a new city library. In more recent years, beginning in 2005, 2006, a portion of those funds and the receipts accrued annually through the state in, to the tune of approximately $75,000, have been put into the general fund to offset the cost of operating the library, even at the very reduced levels that it is currently operating. The amount, current balance in the library fund is approximately $550,000, so it does retain a credible balance, but the governor's proposal would eliminate any future opportunity to add to that fund or to rely, have some small amount of funds at least to rely on to offset legitimate operating costs in the, in the delivery of library services. At this point, I would say that, as I'm highlighting the direct impacts to local city governments, we must be mindful of the fact that the, many of the cuts or changes, redistribution of service delivery and resources that is anticipated in the governor's budget, would be visited directly on the delivery of services through county governments. And, and as I'm sure the city council is aware, the, and I'm not directly discussing those tonight because they do not impact direct financial relationships between the city and the state of California. We do need to be mindful of the fact, though, that the relationship between program delivery and funding is different between counties and cities, I'm sorry, between counties and the state and between cities and the state. And specifically, counties tend to be more heavily engaged in the human service delivery area and receive a higher percentage generally of their funds directly through, through the state. What that means for us, and it does mean something very serious to us, and that is that the county will likely be unable to continue delivering at the level that it has historically with the limited amount of state funds that it receives being cut back. It is likely that human services and health services that are currently delivered by the county, by this county and others up and down the state, will either no longer be delivered or will be ways, it may need to be discussed, to shift those services to local cities if they're going to be continued at all. That's a, and a fact that I think we are currently unable to quantify, but we've seen before and could potentially anticipate again, should the state be successful in approving a budget that once again seeks to place the lion's share of the financial responsibility on takeaways from local cities, from local governments. The most serious component, or the most immediately concerning component of the governor's proposed budget, is his proposal to do away with redevelopment as a function of local government. As the city council is aware, redevelopment is intended to produce economic, tangible economic development results, and specifically, and in most cases, those that would not otherwise be able to be created by the private sector or by the limited resources of municipal and other local agency general funds. So redevelopment was implemented many years ago with the intent of providing a dedicated funding source, and that source is growth in property tax revenues that goes to local redevelopment agencies instead of being distributed among all of the various taxing entities within the community. There is a very healthy provision within redevelopment law and to which the redevelopment agency of the city of San Bruno does adhere, and that is for pass-through of, in our case, approximately 50% of all tax increment revenues received by our agency are actually passed back through to taxing entities, schools, mosquito abatement district, the city itself, along with a variety of many others. So it is not entirely accurate to say that all revenues that go to the city, go to a redevelopment agency represent a direct take from other taxing entities, and in particular, the concern I would say most generally is around school district funding. With that said, the proposal then is to completely eliminate redevelopment agencies. It is unclear at this time exactly how that would occur. There are numbers of legal and other issues that are pending resolution, and so it is very early to speculate about precisely how that would happen and precisely what the impact to the San Bruno redevelopment agency would be. In very general terms, as the city council is aware, our redevelopment agency is relatively young in the, in terms of comparison to the implementation of, or the opportunity of the establishment of redevelopment statewide, and has only since approximately 2007 begun to generate tax increment revenues that are in excess of the day-to-day operating costs of the agency. The council is also aware that the agency has incurred debt that currently resides at the level of approximately $3 million to the equipment reserve as startup costs that were incurred in the early days of the formation of the agency prior to it generating really any tax increment revenues at all. More to the point, the agency has, I would say, ambitious, or at least moderately ambitious plans for, that are, that are now within sight, and we are on the cusp of being able to make a tangible difference beyond that, which has already been implemented in the city of San Bruno, with the realization of the vision that's captured in our transit corridors plan. And I know the city council is aware and has been anxious to take advantage of the promise, if you will, that redevelopment provides and the vision that is articulated in the, in the strategic plan that is nearing final completion. Again, I can't articulate with any real certainty at this point precisely how redevelopment in our state would be dismantled, but there is consideration in the proposal that the governor's office has made, that existing obligations of redevelopment agencies would be secured with the continuation of some form of tax increment revenues, and that by doing so, by limiting the continued flow of tax increment to redevelopment agencies or their successor agency, organizations that would be in place simply to secure the payoff of agency obligations and debt. There is indication that those types of obligations, which our agency has actually incurred very little of, would continue to be satisfied. There was an initial, as, as this news rolled out of the governor's office, there was initial scramble to consider whether agencies could issue debt to essentially encumber amounts of tax increment that might be anticipated over the life of a redevelopment agency, and the city council has considered such a technique in current, in previous strategic planning sessions and consideration of our redevelopment implementation planning processes. The very next thing that began to be discussed was the state enacting urgency legislation to prevent that from happening, for urgency legislation to be implemented that would, in essence, retroactively eliminate any new debt incurred from the provisions of the governor's proposal. So that, that option came to be considered as a, as a, as a less viable way to protect redevelopment resources. However, in the very recent days, increasingly it appears as if that strategy by the state may not be successful, and if not, we might be well advised to consider whether we could put our future agency tax increment under some sort of debt obligation in order to possibly protect it. So although that strategy does not appear in the list that I'm going to discuss with you from the staff report, I will add it as an item that I think needs to be considered over the, over the next days as, as part of an overall strategy to address the potential devastating consequences to the city of San Bruno, should this governor's proposal be ultimately successful. Much more simply, the item that's in front of you tonight is to consider the sending of a letter to the governor's office that would articulate not only the tangible improvements that have been part of the redevelopment agency work program in the city of San Bruno over the past few years, but also to articulate- over the past few years, but also to articulate the harm that would be the result of the proposal being implemented particularly in our city. That letter is in front of you tonight, and we're looking for your concurrence that that be sent. And I would add that in addition to the sending of a letter, that the council consider directing staff to make sure that we stay current with initiatives being forwarded through the League of California Cities and the California Redevelopment Association as they emerge and as requests for action are being made, for example, to call legislators, to call the governor's office, or typical types of requests that we might receive, that you give us the authority that this is an issue that has your attention, that you're concerned about, and that you authorize us to undertake on your behalf over the next days and weeks as this effort continues in the early part of the governor's budget consideration. In addition to considering bonding as a strategic attempt to address the protection of both current tax increments in hand as well as those that would otherwise be received over time, staff is proposing that we look at the documentation that exists on agency obligations outstanding. For example, we do have the issuance of certificates of participation that occurred in 2002 to construct the police facility, I'm sorry, I believe it was in 2002, to construct the police facility. Redevelopment tax increments are pledged by an agreement between the city and the agency to cover the debt service on the COPs that were issued by the city. We think it's urgent and critical that we take a look at that fairly simple agency-city agreement and make sure that it can withstand the scrutiny of a attempt to only pay tax increment where it is secured by a legitimate debt or other type of agency obligation. Thirdly, we recommend that you direct us to look at any and all other ways that we might secure a city and agency relationship with respect, for example, to the outstanding debt. As I mentioned before, we have $3 million of agency debt to the general fund equipment reserve, either strengthening that agreement in order, again, that it could withstand the elimination of redevelopment via the governor's proposed budget, and/or that we simply consider repaying it so that those funds go out of the agency, are no longer subject to being eliminated. Two additional items that we look at, the relationship that we have with the redevelopment agency relative to the ownership of real property assets. The agency does own one piece of property in our downtown. It's not, I don't know exactly what the governor's proposal would, you know, how that asset would be disposed with the budget proposal, but I think it's safe to say we don't want it to go out of our hands, and if transferring it to the city in some manner would protect it, again, I think that's something that you ought to consider directing us to take a hard look at. And then lastly, as the city council is aware, we have obligations through our housing set-aside that is one feature of redevelopment activity. We have a very substantial annual ongoing obligation to the affordable housing units that have been produced at the Crossing project. We need to look at that and make sure that agreement, again, withstands the test of the potential elimination of redevelopment. But beyond that, the way the governor's proposal is currently structured, housing increment would revert to the housing, the local housing authority. In other words, the feature of redevelopment activity that goes to the provision of affordable housing would continue, but it would be undertaken not by redevelopment agencies but by local housing authorities. As you know, the city of San Bruno does not have a local housing authority, and in our case, that jurisdiction is with the county housing authority. So the question would be, are we comfortable with San Bruno increment, housing increment going to the county housing authority? What exactly would that mean to the ability to produce affordable housing in our community? And how might we go about, would it be worthwhile going about establishing a housing authority here in San Bruno, again, to protect the housing redevelopment increment? That's a snapshot of the various strategies that the persons very closely involved in redevelopment are recommending. We are recommending tonight that you give us direction to take a hard look at these and any other strategies that might present themselves over the next days and weeks, and that you ask us to report back to you at your next council meeting on the status of these various strategies and any potential immediate action items. With that, I will stop and ask you to let me know if you have any questions.
To the chair. Here we go.
Thank you. I think you were very detailed in what it's getting down to with redevelopment, which is a concern. It seems that, my understanding is contractual obligations that we may have, i.e., the police plaza, the equipment reserve, the housing, are things that we may be able to hold on to because it's under that umbrella. Now, it's not a guarantee, but it's the way it looks like it could be going at this point. But however, we've talked about other ideas, thoughts, concepts at Huntington and San Bruno Avenue. Obviously, that would not protect any future endeavors that we would have. So I would like, when we come back, to figure out what we can do quickly, if need be. May not be the, you know, ideal situation, it may not be seen that the state would like this, but, you know, they've already received, taken, 1.99 million from redevelopment already. And now, and I understand it's tough in Sacramento, but it's tough here, too. And so with those monies that we have, we ought to do whatever we can within the parameter, and if that means contractual obligations, so that it protects it, or however it's written, you brought up the Wells Fargo site, which I hadn't thought of that. Then I think we need to look to those quickly, efficiently, and effectively, bring those back, and let's see what we can do, because we don't have a lot of time.
Ken.
On the other side of the coin, we need to fight. We need to fight along with the league of cities and all the other cities through the state and say, no way. No way. I mean, this is 10 years, and we've worked so hard for the last 10, 11 years to implement redevelopment, and we have a lot to show for it, and we have big plans. We're not going to start over again. I mean, what's going to happen? You know, their idea is to lower the threshold for bond measures to 55%. Yeah, I'm sure the public's going to really, you know, jump on that. So I think we have to equally fight to, you know, to tell, get the message into this new governor's head that it's wrong. It's wrong for the local communities.
I'm sorry, real quick. On this letter that you've just shown us tonight for Governor Brown, would it be possible, one of the council things, to CC also Li Lan Yi and Jerry Hill so that they're aware clearly of our opposition?
Very good idea, absolutely.
I'm sure they already hear it, but I want it to be reaffirmed to them where we stand since they're up in Sacramento dealing with this.
Any comments?
So does that mean we get to send the letter? Would someone like to make a motion?
First of many, hopefully.
I move we send the letter.
Second.
Motion, second on the floor, to send the letter to the governor with CCs to our state senator and assembly person. All in favor?
Aye.
Send the letter.
Thank you.
Good, and keep us posted on all of the different recommendations that could possibly come up. Appreciate that.
Through the chair. I'm just curious, how are we finding out about the latest developments from Sacramento? And are we getting timely alerts from any particular place?
Yes, we are. Both the League of California Cities and the California Redevelopment Association are on this very heavily, and we're receiving daily or every other daily messages about actions that are being taken, calls to action, or information that's coming down from Sacramento.
Okay. Is there any advantage, or would it be a good idea for us to direct you now, pass a motion to say, under the signature of the mayor, any needed letters that need to go out in between council meetings should and would go out?
Absolutely, and you don't necessarily, if that's the concurrence of the city council, we have done that in the past at the mayor's authority. I think identifying that you are all behind that and that that kind of information can be included in a letter, I think, is important. The other thing that, from time to time, comes up is there'll be press conferences scheduled in a very quick manner sometimes, or rallies, or other types of initiatives to have groups of city council persons go talk to legislators. Those are the types of strategies that are often initiated in this type of circumstance. And I know the league and the CRA would be very well appreciative of any and all city council members actually engaging personally in those types of initiatives, because it can go on, it gets, you know, it's wearing. We've been at this for a really long time, and, not this particular one, but this series of threats to the stability of local revenues. So I would appreciate the opportunity to be able to keep you informed about that and call on you as may be necessary from time to time.
Okay.
Need any action on that?
Do.
Almost lost Ken.
That would not be.
Do we have money for a new chair?
No.
Do we need an action on that, Ken, or just a direction?
Either way, it's fine.
Well, I move that we, as a council, support and any action that the mayor needs to take and the city manager needs to take in between city council meetings to support the defense of our redevelopment agency.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor on a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Through the chair.
Michael.
One more question. When we spoke previously regarding this topic, you mentioned also that there is a portion of the redevelopment money that goes back to the general fund to help subsidize some portion of activities that take place in community development. And I'm wondering, when we go to plan out our next budget, are we, or would you suggest that we not include a contribution from redevelopment into that budget?
Well, as I believe the finance director discussed as part of the audit presentation, is that one of the big threats to next year's budget is this, and the primary reason is not because, or the threats to the general fund. I mean, this threat has many different facets to it. The elimination of redevelopment and the ability to build, you know, do what redevelopment was intended to do is a huge threat to the future of San Bruno. A more immediate threat is the fact that there is approximately $1 million of annual redevelopment tax increment that is funding day-to-day operations of the redevelopment agency that are delivered through a portion of the time for a large number of city staff persons. There are some, also some positions in the city service that are funded exclusively by redevelopment funds, and so how to address that significant threat to our general fund operating budget needs to be a serious consideration of the upcoming workshop and then the development of the budget as we move through the next several months, during which time also, this picture is going to clear substantially as to how exactly this will happen and what precisely it means for revenues to the city of San Bruno. I think the governor might argue that, well, you're going to be, you're going to receive additional revenue because tax increment is not going to take away, as it does currently, from taxes that would otherwise be received by taxing entities. And I should have mentioned this earlier, the city of San Bruno is a relatively low property tax city, and as you probably know, Proposition 13 distributed property taxes in a different way among taxing entities, among different cities. So some cities might receive, some cities receive no property tax. Some cities receive 5% of the property tax that's collected in their community. Some receive as much as 25% or 26% of the property tax collected in their city. All of that is based on formulas that were set in cement with the passage of Proposition 13 many years ago. The city of San Bruno receives roughly 12% to 13% of the property tax dollar that is collected in the city of San Bruno. So it's a relatively small offset, if you will, to the amount of tax increment that the agency would receive. So there'll be some effect to the general fund, a big negative effect, a potentially small positive effect. We have to do the analysis and figure that out, and then march through this process to see how it all works out as part of our, as one among several big issues affecting our 1112 general fund operating budget.
If, Ms. Mayor, this is not a done deal. This is coming before the voters in June. This budget proposal, for him to eliminate, for the governor to eliminate redevelopment and to make all these shifts to the county, these are still going to be coming to the voters, isn't it?
Well, the budget is approved by the state legislature, and it's not done by the voters. There are some questions about, from a legal perspective, about whether the legislature and the governor have the authority to eliminate redevelopment, which has some status in the state constitution. But it is, the budget itself and the proposal to eliminate redevelopment is not currently scheduled to come before the voters. I'm right about that.
What is coming to the voters in June?
But it may need to.
It may need to. The thing that may appear before the voters is a continuation of the vehicle license fee. That's the one thing I'm aware of, that it may be on the ballot in, I think, in June.
So we're finding out that Prop 22 has some loopholes.
I'm not prepared to say that because I'd like to believe that, you know, there's a more challenging uphill battle for the governor to get this budget through, given the security of Proposition 22.
It just seems that the irony of it all is that the governor and the state legal staff are looking at ways to circumvent Prop 22.
Yes.
Our own tax dollars going to try and cut us.
Yes.
I'll just add that I think it's probably just the beginning, even if the legislature tries to take the money, that there'll be litigation over whether or not they have the authority to do it, whether or not it's constitutional under the state constitution, whether it violates Prop 22. All those issues, I think, would be in play in court afterwards if the state goes through with the plan. But it's, what I've heard is it's a plan, it's just, it's a plan, and that's the beginning of the discussions in the legislature. So what we see in later in the year may not be what is being proposed right now as well. So it's fairly fluid because of these problems.
I was supposed to be positive? There is some silver lining.
All right, let's move to item G. Provide an update regarding the association of Bay Area government and Metropolitan Transportation Commission's sustainable community strategy related to SB 375.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Several years ago, the. Several years ago, the... Hi, I'm Aaron Ackman, the Community Development Director.
Thank you, Aaron.
Several years ago, the California Assembly passed AB 32, which was landmark legislation in the state of California in an attempt to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Another follow-up legislation that, to help implement SB, or AB 32, was Senate Bill 375. And what Senate Bill 375 did is require regions to tie their land use policy to their transportation policy for the first time. One of the key concepts within this legislation was the requirement for each region to adopt a sustainable community strategy, or an SCS. In the SCS, the process is being led by A-BAG as well as MTC in conjunction with the Air Quality Management District, the Bay Conservation and Development Commission, and all the cities and counties within the Bay Area. The primary objective of the SCS is simple. Basically, take the three regional plans, which used to be separate dockets and documents and oftentimes inconsistent, and make them all consistent and release them at the same time. These three regional plans are the Regional Transportation Plan, which is released by MTC, the Regional Land Use Plan, which is released by A-BAG, as well as the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which allocates housing units to each cities within the Bay Area. Now, this is important for, to San Bruno for a number of reasons. And I think the first reason that it's important is to really show that the city council is that we're on the right track. Within the last 10 years, we've adopted policies that are consistent with the spirit of SB 375. Some specific ones are the Crossing Specific Plan Development, which put high-density housing near our BART station, the Transit Corridor Plan, which is now looking to put high-density and transit-oriented development near our new train station, as well as just support for the new grade separation and the trade station. However, it is also important because this process will produce the new housing allocation numbers, and since it is a goal of the state to put more housing near transit, because that's ultimately what's going to help us reduce greenhouse gases, San Bruno will most likely see an increase in the housing allocation numbers associated with the next housing cycle. The purpose of this report is to provide some background into what this process will be. The process that A-BAG and MTC have developed will be a three-step process with a lot of back and forth with cities in between. The first, in February of 2011, next month, the A-BAG is going to release the first housing numbers, and this is going to be known as the vision statement. And typically, housing allocation numbers have three different things that are constrained. You have your physical constraints, your mountains, your wetlands. You have your market constraints, what will be the actual demand for housing in individual cities, as well as your local policy constraints. This will only take into consideration physical constraints. So it will not look at local policies, it will not look at local market conditions. This is, in the perfect world, this is where the housing would be to reduce greenhouse gases. Obviously, this is going to end up having, some cities having way too high of housing allocation number or way too low of housing allocation number. So in the months following the release of this vision statement, cities will come to the city council, explain where there may be deficiencies in their analysis, and take these back to A-BAG for response. A second, more detailed scenario, called the detailed scenario, will be released probably in early summer. And once again, this will be taken back to the city councils around the Bay Area for response. And finally, a preferred scenario is going to be released in about this time next year. And this preferred scenario will show where the housing will go, and all the housing allocation numbers will be based on this scenario. Once again, throughout the process, staff will keep city council informed. What we are doing at a sub-region level, the city council adopted in the consent calendar for the, for the city to take part in the Regional Housing Needs Assessment process. We did this last time as a county. In fact, we were the only county in the state to take part in this process, where we're able to trade units with other cities within the county to put housing units where they make sense. We'll work with A-BAG through this process, also through the Grand Boulevard process. We'll meet with other cities to make, to look where these housing units should be placed. On a region-wide level, there's something called the Regional Advisory Working Group. I happen to sit on this working group, representing Samhail County Planning Directors on this. So I'm in touch with A-BAG all the time. We'll be able to take back our city's concerns back to A-BAG, as well as other cities' concerns within Samhail County. There are a lot of benefits that could come out of this process. Cities that are doing it right and that do have plans that are consistent with SB 375 will be eligible for more grants, especially related to infrastructure and infrastructure improvements. A lot of these mass transit areas are in the older urban core where you really do have to plan for infrastructure, because the infrastructure, in our case, could be 70, 80 years old, and that has to support newer housing development and office development within these areas. From a planning perspective, one thing that a lot of the planners are excited about is SEQA streamlining review. I think everyone has probably heard of projects like Redwood Cities Project that is being held up by SEQA litigation. This would streamline some of the potential SEQA legislation so that housing units could be built quicker. So the next step, we'll be back in front of you again after we've had a time to review the February 2011 numbers, vision, vision numbers, and I could take any questions at this time.
Any questions?
I'll wait.
Thank you for the update.
Great, thanks.
Exciting.
Item H, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with West Yost Associates in the amount of $212,000 and appropriate $205,000 for preparation of the water system master plan.
I am Clara Fabry, Public Services Director. Honorable Mayor and City Council, as water provider to our resident, it is critical to ensure of the quality and reliability of our water resources. To ensure of this outcome, the city is in the process of developing our groundwater management plan and also our urban water management plan. The delivery of this resource to the user is supported by a complex system to the water It's made up by different, the pipes, the pump stations, the valves of our overall water infrastructure. The flexibility and the redundancy of this system is very critical when our system is tested, how was the case during the unfortunate tragedy last September. The update, the update at master plan does that. It is the best management practice. Our last update of our water system master plan was in 2000. Since our last update of our master plan, the majority of the projects included in our CIP recommendation of the last master plans were implemented. You have a list of, some highlights of those projects which were implemented. More than $7 million of those projects from the last master plan were implemented. Also, since then, some of the regulation has been changed. New birding code was, updated birding code was approved. Water quality standards has been, has changed. Our existing, the quality of the, of the existing water changed also since 2000. For, also, a major new project is under development phase, development phase right now, is the groundwater recovery project, so-called conjunctive use project with the PUC, which would have a major impact on how our whole water system will perform. For those reasons, it's very important for us to update our water system master plan to reassess what would be the best investment in our system, what would be the best priority, how to make those investments in our system. The scope of the master plan will be, in essence, to develop a model and using that model to really run a few operational alternative to figure out the best and the most effective management of our system. Based on the conclusion of, and the recommendation of those run alternatives, then a set of recommendation, a set of CIP projects will be recommended with a certain priority recommendation also how those projects should be implemented. In September, our department issued a RFP. Four consultant made a proposal, proposal to our RFP. Three of those consultants were interviewed by a selection panel, and West Yost was selected as the most qualified consultant to help us to update our master plan, water master plan. Based on, last year, in our '09, '10, CIP budget was included $10,000 for the development of the RFP, in essence. It is my recommendation to request a additional appropriation in our 2010, '11 CIP on additional $205,000 for a total of $215,000 to fund this, the update of our water system master plan. My recommendation is to authorize the city manager to enter in agreement with West Yost for a total contract, agreement amount of $212,000. If you have any question, I will be happy to answer.
Any questions?
Through the chair. I know you said, though their proposal is more costly, the approach and level of specific experience with the system is something that's more desirable by staff. Is that correct?
This consultant never, never worked, never had any prior working relation with the city.
Which consultant?
West Yost.
Okay.
But has a, the consultant has a very broad experience working on the same type of water system in the Bay Area.
And I know we often hear now, master plan is, or a particular idea, it's the best management practice. And help me, not being an expert in this field, when we say best management practice, I could use that and label that in certain areas of various professions. But what do our neighboring cities, I would, thank you. Thanks. I believe, do our neighboring cities all have master plans? Do they believe this is the best management practice, those that have their own systems or maybe those that are occupied by Cal Water or other agencies? And how often do they find themselves doing one of these master plans?
I didn't conduct any specific survey to ask specifically each city around us what was, when was the date when they updated their last urban water management plan. Certainly is a overall approach in the industry, and I am very confident that each, any water provider agency has a master plan. How often they are updating, and typically, it's a recommendation is that each five years. If it's not, if it's no major regulatory environment change or major change in the requirement of the system itself, then it's a, is typical to update those master plans then each five years to make sure that all of the decisions or to re-verify the assumption in your prior plan. If you really think about it, it's very important to re-assess our thinking 10 years ago. Many things has changed, and any investment in our water system is very, very expensive. Any projects, it will cost over $1 million. These are very, very expensive project. And it's the investment of $200,000, I am not diminishing how, is lots of money, $2,000. But if you compare with the cost of those investment to, to update our system and to invest in certain project, is a very worthwhile investment to make sure that those many million of dollars are invested in the best priority order and also in the best way, that, that really are the most efficient and necessary investment in our system.
Okay. Through the chair.
Yes, Michael.
Just one clarification. It looks like you're requesting an appropriation of $215,000, but the contract is for $212, there's a $3,000 difference?
Is the, is the, the dollar difference is for staff time, that typically when a CIP project is budgeted in our CIP program, is a real cost for that project, a total cost. Includes consultant time, inter, project management time, that is a true cost for that project. It's a project cost.
Okay.
It's not just consultant cost, it's a true project accounting and represent the total cost associated with that project.
Okay. And one more question. The next item on the agenda is a long-term test of the wells, that affects the well system. And I'm wondering, will the results of that test have some impact on what our plan ends up being? And how do these two, how does this study and that test merge together? And will the results be reflected in, in our long-term plan?
And certainly, you will listen to the presentation of the next item, and you will realize that the outcome of that pilot project will give us more information how to, or how to enter in long-term agreement with PUC for the groundwater recovery project or the conjunctive use. How our system will be impacted and what would be, what will be the shared cost associated with that project? That the next project will give us more information on long-term maintenance and additional cost, more than any additional major improvement, but will need to be included in our overall Would be my assumption, how I said, we'll have a, the next project will be, will have a very limited impact, if any, on the master plan, but will have an impact on our, our final agreement with PUC on the groundwater recovery project.
Wouldn't you agree that if, I think something I saw in that report was that there could be some maintenance impacts...
Correct.
To basically mothballing the wells. And it seems that if we were talking about a master plan that includes how we upgrade the infrastructure and how we maintain that infrastructure, would be impacted by a proposal that we not use the wells all the time?
You are absolutely correct. But it would be my assumption at this time that, that additional long-term maintenance and operation cost will be paid by PUC and will be an additional cost to somebody else, not to us. And that's the purpose. And then would be a no-cost impact, in essence, included in our master plan.
But cost aside, you wouldn't think that there would be a different decision made in terms of what we upgrade and don't upgrade based on how the wells are used?
I am not assuming so at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
I read.
Hi. This is kind of a related subject. As we are losing people and as we are changing our system and as we are learning new things about our system that have been buried and literally forgotten at different points... about our system that have been buried and literally forgotten at different points, are we making a very strong effort to update all our maps and our general knowledge of things? And I don't want us caught five years from now saying, oh, I didn't know that piece of pipe was there. So is that, I know that's not part of the water plan per se, but I know that all that data needs to be there.
Thank you very much for asking that question, and...
This was not staged, by the way.
Based on your foresight, in our CIP budget was included in the last few years, a GIS upgrade or information system update. This is, I, I don't think I am exaggerating if I am saying that was the first priority focus for all of our utilities, not just water, in the last few years. And I can report to you with a very high degree of comfort that our water system information now is, probably is reflect the reality, I would guess, 95%. Our, lots of work was done, our, on our sewer information system, our streets and street line, street lights, and also our storm system. Those utilities, the information available for the other utilities are much less as percentage of equity, but they are in work and on, under development now. But for the water itself, our map was just updated in December, and the GIS system is updated also, and is a very reliable information system available now for our water system.
Great, okay. And then, isn't part of the master plan, water master plan, or urban water master plan dictated that we have to be done by the state?
The urban water, the, the update of the urban, urban water master plan is mandated to be updated by 1st of July of this year.
Okay.
Not the master plan.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Action.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Speaking about ayes, it's our last item. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement with the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission to conduct a long-term testing program of the city's well field.
My name's Mark Reinert, I'm the Water System and Conservation Manager. Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, I'm here tonight on the behalf of Public Services to request approval to execute a memorandum of agreement with the San Francisco Public Utility Commission to conduct a long-term testing program of the city's well fields. This agreement is similar to the JALINE Agreement that council awarded. The testing program will be funded by SAPUC. At the end of the 2003, 2005 Groundwater Storage and Recovery Pilot Project, better known as the Conjunctive Use Pilot Project, the city staff turned back on four wells. During the two-year dormage stage, when the wells were turned off between 2003 and 2005, during the put year of the Groundwater Storage and Recovery Project, iron bacteria and biofiling formed on the well screens at three wells, which resulted in low water production. The three wells had to be chemically rehabbed due to clog, clogging of the well screens. Should the city enter in the groundwater storage and recovery agreement with SAPUC in the future, additional information is needed on how quickly biofiling occurs and how often well screens will need rehabilitation. The testing program will help us determine the well performance characteristics over a period of time, and in response to a variety of basin and well operational conditions. The long-term testing program will take estimated 18 months to complete. The work will include documenting well 16 performance at the start of the testing program, collecting, submitting quarterly performance data during the testing program, and Rhyme, the city's consultant for the groundwater management plan, will prepare a draft and final report that summarizes the testing program and will recommend well exercising frequency. If the well performance production falls more than 20% due to the testing program, well 16 will be rehabilitated at no cost to the city. All project costs will be funded by SAPUC. That's the end of my presentation. Any questions?
The chair. I have a quick, quick question. You're concerned about the wells being shut down or lowered in production because they might develop a lot of, we'll call it debris?
Yeah, we found out during the, the two years when they, they were, they were run at a minimal time, I think, once every week for like 20 minutes. That was not enough to keep the screens clear of biofiling.
Okay.
So we just wanted to know, we want to do this test to find out how, how, what timeframe does, does a biofiling occur? And the study would be very helpful in operations.
Yeah, and just from a novice, you know, the question is, can, can you pump the, work the wells and pump, pump it back into the aquifer? Does that defeat the purpose of the, of the test? Just to keep the wells going?
The way we have it configured now, we cannot do that.
You can't do that.
But there, the test will show that we can maybe run it, run maybe, you know, we have five wells, we can maybe run three of them at a lower rate, you know, not, not pump so much water, and then turn the other two off during, or maybe run, or run one or two. So we'll find out during the study how often we need to run the wells to keep the screens clear.
Okay.
Through the chair, mine was really, a quick, under the cost, it says, the cost for testing program needed well rehabilitation will not exceed $167,000. This figure does not include in-kind costs for San Bruno field staff to collect water quality samples, which shall be borne solely by the city. Is there any guesstimate of what?
It's minute, to do the...
Clarify what minute means to you.
Oh, to collect the samples, it'd probably, there's four times, so it's probably about eight hours of time for a sampler.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Michael.
Would that sampling be, would that normally be done anyway, even if we weren't doing this test?
It's done quarterly, sampling all our wells.
Any other questions? Action by the council?
Oh.
Irene.
I'm sorry, I have a question. So I'm, I'm a little confused by this. We're only doing the test on well 16, even though the other wells were also affected? Is this assuming that whatever happens in well 16 is comparable to what's going to happen in the other wells, and we'll use as data? Okay.
Well 16 is centralized in our well field.
Okay.
And the most significant biofiling at that well, so I picked that well.
Okay. But that's fine. Once we get the information, we'll know more.
No questions? Action.
Okay. I'll introduce the resolution for adoption.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 11, we've already had the report from the Personnel Board. Item 12, comments from council members?
Through the chair.
Irene.
I would just like to inform you that on Thursday, I was voted to be the vice chair for BASCLA, the Bay Area Service and Conservation Agency, which is 26 agencies from three counties, and we're kind of the watchdogs of the San Francisco PUC. We've instituted the refitting, seismic refitting of the Hetch Hetchy, among other things, so, just so you know.
Congratulations.
Chair next year?
No, it's a two-year, in two years.
All right. Any other comments? Item 13, we'll be going into closed session to confer with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, one case, California Government Code Section 54954.9A. And item 14, this meeting will be adjourned until February 8th, 2011, right here at the senior center.